Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 18th, 2024 Grants Pass City Council Workshop. I know we have Councilor De La Grange and Phazer online, and we have our Budget Committee here with us today, and some of them may be participating online as well. So we're going to get kicked off with Budget Committee Orientation. And it looks like Erin is prepared to get us started there.
All right. Good morning, Council, members of the public, Budget Committee members. Thank you for attending the first Budget Committee Orientation. It's absolutely gorgeous outside, so I'm thinking maybe we should just grab your handouts, and we'll just go for a walk, and we could talk budget out in the sun. How does that work? Let's go! No? Okay, fine. We'll stay in here and talk about budget. So I want to first state that JC, it was going to be a tag team between myself and JC today. JC is feeling a little under the weather, so it will just be me, but I do want to state that this is information that was put together by our great Finance Department and myself, and it was a team effort to get this together to you today. The idea is for you to just to get a general feel for what we're going to be looking at for the upcoming budget cycle, and not necessarily the numbers and what we're looking at, but we want to provide you information on what the purpose is and sort of how you might be able to read the documents that will be coming to you in the future. You have two items with you today. You have the presentation, and also you have a group of handouts, and I'll be referring to some of these handouts later on in the presentation, but these are just helpful tips on how to read the budget and what it means. So what is the budget? Will be something we'll discuss, along with where do I fit in as a Budget Committee member? We'll move on to how do we get to a proposed budget? Why is the budget structured in this manner? What are the important details of the budget? How do I read the budget document? And how do I read the capital budget document? And we'll conclude with any questions you may have. So what is a budget? Budget serves multiple purposes. One, it is a legal document. It's that document that ultimately gets adopted that allows us to make appropriations throughout the year and spend public dollars. It's a financial plan. It's a roadmap. It talks to the staff and my colleagues. It talks to Council, it talks to the community about what our plans are for the revenues and expenditures that we receive. It's an internal control mechanism because it does set purchasing authority. It is a policy document, and it is a public communication document, along with a process. Who makes the rules? Our budget process is very similar to the rest of the municipalities in the State of Oregon because we follow Oregon Revised Statutes, which identify specific procedures for preparing and presenting the budget. The budget process really starts with a proposed budget. The proposed budget is a culmination of a lot of work from sort of beginning with Council on what your goals are, and we take a look at that. We also develop what we think our revenues and our expenses might be, and we put that together from a staff level. We then present the budget to the Budget Committee, where you ultimately approve the budget, and then you approve the budget to the City Council, which adopts the budget. This is just a graphic that sort of highlights the same thing that I just mentioned. As Budget Officer and City Staff, we do propose the budget, which then moves to the Budget Committee, who approves the budget, and City Council ultimately adopts the budget citing the appropriations. The Budget Committee consists of City Council and equal number of appointees, so you have eight citizens at large that also serve on the Budget Committee. Primary roles of the Budget Committee are to hear the budget message, which will start the season off later on in the year, hold public meetings, hear public comment and input, which is a requirement for each one of our meetings, review and discuss the proposed budget, make revisions if necessary to the proposed budget, ultimately approve each tax rate, and approve the budget. When it comes to holding public meetings, all Budget Committee meetings are subject to public meeting law. A quorum is required to conduct business, and a majority is required to take action. So we need to make sure that we do have quorums present in order for us to move forward with those budget meetings. And those budget meetings are relatively condensed in nature, and so it is really important that we get the participation, both from a City Council perspective and from a citizen at large perspective. One of the most important things, as it states in Oregon Revised Statutes, is the budget process needs to provide an opportunity for public comment. And so each one of your Budget Committee meetings will have an opportunity for the public to make comment on the information that's been provided, and you'll be asked to actually take that public comment at those meetings. From a budget calendar perspective, the first budget meeting is set for May 7th. Future budget meeting dates would be May 9th and May 14th. The first budget meeting agenda, what is it going to look like? When we first open up the budget meeting, I'll open up the budget meeting as Budget Officer, and I'll ask for nominees to elect a chair. The City Council, the Budget Committee will nominate and elect a chair, then the meeting is turned over to that chair, and the chair then opens up nominations for vice chair. And once that's complete, we review and adopt the ground rules. You receive the proposed budget, and here a presentation of the budget message. We'll talk about the strategic plan and capital allocations also that evening, and we'll set the schedule for future meetings. So how do we propose a budget and get it ready for the Budget Committee? It really is focused on our strategic plan. We have a good strategic planning process here in the City of Grants Pass. We have a strategic plan with goals, and those goals have associated objectives, and they are all prioritized. The process that we use is Council reviews the state of the city through community input. They listen to their advisory committees. We have over 11 advisory committees or boards, and Council relies on them to help drive policy and future goals. We have public comment opportunities. We develop our strategic plan. We ultimately adopt a strategic plan, and from there, the city works on developing a work plan. Staff develops that work plan, which is sort of a GIS roadmap on how to accomplish Council's goals, and that work plan makes it much easier for us to develop a budget because we then assign resources based on Council's highest priorities. Once we have that established, we bring the budget to you, and it is an adopted balanced budget. The Budget Committee ultimately appropriates resources through the process that we talked about, and then staff implements the work plan and the budget, and we monitor success. And that is our process when it comes to our strategic planning and budget process. They're all linked together. We have five main goals for the city. Ensure community safety, provide cooperative shared leadership, encourage economic opportunities, facilitate sustainable manageable growth, maintain and operate and expand our infrastructure to meet community needs. So when the Budget Committee appropriates resources, they're appropriating resources for us to achieve those five goals that you see on the screen. So from a budget structure standpoint, the basis of accounting that we use, Oregon does require each local government to disclose its basis of accounting, and Grants Pass uses the modified accrual basis of accounting, where revenues are recorded when measurable and available, and we do a good faith effort to make that happen on those estimates, and expenditures are recorded when the goods or services are delivered and liabilities are incurred. The budget is organized by funds, and there are a number of different funds, which we'll highlight today for you. A fund is a self-balancing set of accounts used to record estimated resources and requirements for specific activities and objectives. All resources and requirements must be budgeted. All resources and requirements must be balanced, and anything that we need to make an estimate on, it's done in good faith. So my responsibility and staff's responsibility as Budget Officer and staff is for us to provide the Budget Committee with a balanced budget. So you will see a balanced budget this year with revenues matching expenditures. That's basically what this little graphic shows. It just shows the resources and the requirements have to be the same. You can't have a small amount of resources equalling a large amount of requirements, so they have to equal. We have to provide a balanced budget. Unlike some other governments, maybe the federal government, et cetera, where they do have unanticipated requirements that do not have resources associated with them. The different fund types, let's go over those. These will all be in the budget document when you ultimately get the budget book. These are like some of the three big ones, but there are other ones also. The first is general fund. You may have heard that often. That accounts for all financial resources except those to be accounted for in another fund. So the general fund is the catch-all fund. We have enterprise funds. I'm looking over at Jason, our Public Works Director, because he represents a lot of those enterprise funds. That's our water, our wastewater, our stormwater, our transportation. Those are considered enterprise funds. Those account for operations that are financed and operated through dedicated user charges. So basically, your enterprise funds are funded through, say, for instance, your utility bill, and they're meant to operate as an independent sole-source type of business, so they're called an enterprise fund. We also have special revenue funds, for instance, transportation and lodging tax. These are accounts for funds that are legally restricted in use for a specified purpose. So we have those special revenue funds established so we can track those specific purpose resources. We can't intermix those with, say, general fund dollars because we have to account for those specifically. They have to be spent specifically on transportation. Say, for instance, your gas tax. The gas tax has to be accounted for in a separate fund, a special revenue fund, because all of those funds that we get, we can't go, you may have heard, well, jeez, you know, we pay tax, we've got all sorts of money here, we've got gas tax dollars, let's put that into public safety. Well, technically, legally, we can't do that. So we have a special fund established for our gas tax, which then goes specifically for road maintenance and repair. It can't be used for anything other than that. Other fund types are capital project funds. These are accounts that are held for resources used for the acquisition or construction of major capital facilities. We have also in the budget, you'll see debt service funds. Those are bankrupt, general obligation type of funds. Accounts for the accumulation of receipts, usually for improvement projects. We currently, right now, do not have a general obligation bond on the books, but we have in the past. That's what helped fund our public safety stations, two stations and some fire apparatuses a number of years ago, but that was sunsetted about in, I think, 2021, 2022, 2019. That sunsetted, and so we technically do not have a bond right now. We have internal service funds. Those are for financing of goods and services furnished by one department to another. And then we have, we do have a unique fiduciary fund, which is the landfill. As you may know, we are responsible for the closure of the old landfill, and those resources and expenses all go under this fund. So the next two slides sort of show you the difference between, say, maybe what might be your personal household budget and a city budget. This diagram is sort of more of a personal or a general business type of finance budget, where you have resources coming in. Say you've got your household, and you've got a dual-income household, and the revenue is coming into one pot, and then you can basically sort of dictate where those resources go. We're trying to save for vacations, so we're going to put a little more aside for vacation. And we've got a food allowance, we've got rent, or mortgage, you've got vehicle payments. But you do have the ability to flex what you pay for those, and it's all one pot of money that's sort of going into that account. The city is, like I mentioned earlier, has a number of different funds, and so we have to make sure that those funds are being utilized for their intended purpose. So we have a number of different specific funds, and we track them that way. Say, for instance, water, wastewater, stormwater, those are your enterprise funds. What goes in has to go out in that same fund. It can't transfer, you can't transfer water revenue to, say, parks, or community development, or public safety. Water revenue in has to go to water revenue expenses out. The general fund is the only one that is slightly different than other funds, as it handles everything else by definition. The largest revenue for general fund is property taxes at our 4.13 per thousand. General fund dollars don't have the restriction of those special enterprise funds. So you technically could, if you wanted to, take general fund dollars and help pay for wastewater treatment plant, or help pay for transportation. You can't do that with the other funds. You can't take those other funds and use them for general fund, but general fund can go anywhere. Ultimately, Council allocates those dollars. So here's just an example of general fund support dollars. They go in, and sort of like that household, personal slide that I showed you, the general fund support is similar. You have general fund dollars that have flexibility to go where you desire, and so you can turn the faucet on or off a little higher or more based on the needs of the community and the needs of where you're wanting to accomplish things in the future. Say, for instance, you wanted to do a park expansion. Maybe you need to turn down economic development and planning a little bit so you can provide more resources in parks for a certain amount of years as you're developing a certain park. Oregon law allows local governments to levy three types of property taxes. Grants Pass currently has two of those three in operation. We have a permanent property tax rate of 4.13 per thousand. We also have a local option levy for public safety at $1.79. That was just voted in, and that was a five-year levy. And then we also have the ability to do bonds, like a general obligation bond or bankrupt bond, but we currently do not have any of those in place at this time. When it comes to property taxes, one of the issues that we have, and it's not just the City of Grants Pass, but it's every city within the State of Oregon, and that's why we've been talking about tax reform for years. That's why we are having so many cities, not just the City of Grants Pass, trying to determine options on how to fund general fund services, such as police and fire, or even parks. Part of that reason, or the largest reason for that, is the Oregon Constitution. It places limits on property tax collection. It occurred in two phases. Measure 5 was passed in 1990, which limits combined tax collection by general governments to $10 per thousand of assessed value. So general governments as a whole, no matter how many there are in there, there could be only three general governments, there could be 25 general governments, their total tax rate needs to be no larger than that $10 per thousand. Measure 50 was passed in 1997, which limits the growth in assessed value to no more than 3% per year for existing property. That in itself goes even a little deeper with regards to that, but that in itself creates the issue where you see inflation at 8%, 9%, 10% each year. We're having a revenue increase of 3. There is definitely a difference there, and that's what's created that compounding issue of revenue versus expenditures. Here's just an example of some of the taxing districts and their dollar amounts for Josephine The Josephine County Law Enforcement Services District has an asterisk there because that is new and it starts in fiscal year 25. And then here is the school districts and the schools associated with that. They're a little different. They are calculated differently. They have a $5 cap versus general government, which has a $10 cap. Fund balances. We do have some financial policies that we follow. The city will maintain adequate fund balances to meet seasonal cash flows, support a good credit rating, to have resources to meet emergencies and unanticipated expenses, and to have sufficient resources to begin the next fiscal year. So for that reason, we have reserve fund balances. General fund balance levels are dictated by cash flow requirements to support operating expenses, the relative rate stability from year to year for enterprise funds, susceptibility to emergency or unanticipated expenditures, credit worthiness and capacity, legal or regulatory requirements by some, or the reliability of outside revenues. That all goes into sort of trying to calculate what is a healthy reserve fund balance. Here are the reserve fund balance and the policies that we have adopted for the city. These are important to note because these will all be met when we come to presenting the budget to you. You'll see here the general fund is at 30% to 40%, which is higher than a lot of the other ones. Part of that reason is to provide for a healthy reserve. Part of that reason also is, say, for instance, for general fund, we don't get revenues coming in until November of each year of our fiscal year. Our fiscal year starts July 1, but we don't get new revenues from property taxes until around November. So we need to have a certain amount held in reserve to get us through those first few months before we get new revenues coming in. That's one of the reasons why you would have general fund account high. Enterprise funds, from an operating perspective, that one's 25% to 35%. Those are very important. Some of them life-saving funds, like water and sewer, et cetera, and you want to make sure that you do have a good, healthy reserve to deal with any kind of contingencies or emergencies. However, it does not have the financial constraint that the general fund has with the first few months, because we're getting revenue every month with the enterprise funds. These are set by Council, and this is what guides us in providing for the beginning fund balances each year. So next, I'd like to move into reading the budget, and with that, we'll be probably referencing, you'll want to reference the handout here that we've provided for you, and it's got page numbers. What I've got in that handout is budget process and financial policies, strategic plan information, key revenue details, key expenditure details, capital budget summary, and long-range financial planning with those associated pages. So I'm going to sort of go along with you here, and we'll talk about some of these things. Included in the packet also is funding matrix, resolution, adopting the budget, some additional statistics, and department program descriptions. So the general fund details can be found on page 33 and page 34 in the packet, which are in there. But the first one I want you to take a look at is, if you can sort of scroll through here and find page 33, you can sort of follow along. Again, they're based by subject matter, so page 33 is more towards in the middle of So some of these pages you'll see, and when you get the budget document, what I want to highlight here is that is the main columns that the budgets will show. So the first is your actual fiscal year 21. So we have two years of actual. So we have fiscal year 21, we'll have fiscal year 22, actual. Then we'll have fiscal year 23, budget. We'll have the recommended fiscal year 24, budget, and then the committee-approved budget, and then the adopted budget, and a projection for the upcoming year. Those are going to be the main categories you'll be seeing in the proposed budget that will be coming to you. So this is just, highlights the red here when it comes to beginning fund balance. You have our actuals. Like I mentioned before, you had two actual beginning fund balances. You have the budgeted balance, budgeted budget, beginning budget, sorry. But this is to remind you that everything, if we have an adopted budget fiscal year 24, we believe the beginning fund balance budget, we believe the beginning balance budget will be $13 million. We're projecting that 25 will begin at $10 million. Now, that's a drop. It's a big drop. That's not truly probably what we'll actually experience. What we're budgeting is for full expenditure, but we don't get full expenditure each year. Sometimes we'll have vacancies or openings in personnel, and so we'll be underspent in personal services. So we are budgeting for full expenditure. That's what we're projecting for the future year, which is usually down a little bit, but that's not going to be the true reality when we ultimately have the budget closed General fund details on this one, if you go to page 1, if you go to the page that says 125, which is following page 33 and 34. This just notes ultimately in the budget what Council approves. And the thing that I just wanted to point out here is, in some general fund categories, you'll have your budget, and you'll have the requirements, and when it comes to the total revenues at the end, you'll also potentially have general fund support. And this will show, is general fund providing any additional support to that specific department or division, fund division? So if you want to know, is general fund supporting this, you can go down here and take a look, and it will tell you if general fund is supporting that in those different budgets. Continuing on the next page in your handout, you've got page 159, Program Contingencies Lead to Beginning Fund Balance. If you take a look at the handout, and this was too, it was too big to fit on the slide, but what I wanted to show you is how we come up with the beginning fund balance. You come up with the beginning fund balance by totaling your contingencies and your ending balance for fiscal year 24, which then, if you add 1.3 million in the $500,000, you get the 1.8 million as a beginning fund balance. And that's all that was just to tell you. That's where we get our beginning fund balance. Your contingencies plus your ending creates your beginning for the next budget year. Capital, a couple of things just wanted to highlight. We will be going over capital also, and that'll be a separate document that you'll have. When it comes to capital, you have a project description, so it gives you some good details on what the project is, and it's linked to the Council's strategic goals, and it provides the estimated cost for the project and the funding sources. So each capital project has a resource and requirements table showing the timeline of each item, and that's all this is trying to highlight, is you've got your resources, which are in green, and you've got your requirements, which are in red, and they need to balance each other. So the total resources should be balanced with the total requirements. Let's go a little further, just to give you an idea of the columns. There are, the columns that you'll be seeing is, you'll have the actual through fiscal year 22, you'll have the adopted, you'll have estimated. the adopted, you have estimated, adopted, and then you have a total through the fiscal year with the next year projected and anything future for a total for the project. Those are the main columns that you'll be seeing in your capital books. And the totals through fiscal year '24 is the sum of the actuals through fiscal year '22, and the estimated through fiscal year '23, and the recommended through '24, which then gives you your ultimate total for fiscal year '24. Here's an example. This is the total for the project, the sum. You take a look at through fiscal year '24, you've got total expenditures of $1.2 million. You've got projected $200,000 in the following year with a future, and you get a total. So you've got your totals. Just, this is just highlighting sort of how we put these totals together. You're not adding all of these items up. That's already this total. So this column matches this column with here in the middle is your information. So the estimated ending balance for fiscal year '23 takes the known ending balance through fiscal year '22, and then it adds estimated resources for fiscal year '23, then subtracts the estimated expenditures to then give you an estimated ending balance for fiscal year '23. And then that estimated ending balance for fiscal year '24 takes the estimated ending balance through fiscal year '23, adds the recommended resource for fiscal year '24, then subtracts the recommended fiscal year '24 expenditure. And in most cases, we expend all available resources to the budget year, which provides the flexibility for us. And so we're budgeting for full expenditure, which provides the flexibility for council throughout the year. And that's just in a nutshell, sort of the budget and the budget documents that you'll be seeing when we present this to you at the first meeting in May. Questions?
Thank you, Aaron. Council or committee members, do you have any questions? Rick, go ahead.
Thank you, Aaron. I heard a comment the other day, which I think may be typical of most assessors' office. They said the assessors' office can be as much as 10 years behind on appraisals or assessments on different businesses and so forth. And of course, if we're 10 years behind on that evaluation, then our income from property taxes would be lower, correct?
Theoretically, yes.
So I know sometimes the assessors' office talks about a shortage of personnel. I don't know that we, the city, would want to get in to start employing people in the assessors' office, but if there was a substantial difference, then there could be priority put on trying to make sure the assessors' office is up to date. And I don't know if that's a realistic thing or just the way the operations always go.
I think that that would be something that we'd want to explore in a lot of detail before we go into making that conclusion and wanting to take on some of that responsibility or shared responsibility. Currently, right now, it's housed with the county.
And I wouldn't say we want to take it on, but if nothing else, if we could just offer our moral support and political support of the assessors' office, I think. But that may be just how it functions. I don't know how. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Are there other questions? Not seeing any other questions.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
Mayor, council, and members of the Budget Committee.
Thank you, Budget Committee members, for being here with us and for your service. You'll be real busy in May. If you would like to take any lunch before you go, you are welcome to leave at this point, and you're also welcome to stay. We're going to move
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Today, we are talking about one of our future upcoming projects, which is the A Street reconstruction. Specifically today, we want to talk about what the final striping plan looks like of that project, and whether or not we can facilitate adding bike facilities. So the city is currently in the design process to reconstruct and overlay A Street. So we're going to be reconstructing between 8th Street and Baker Drive. If you've driven in front of the high school, you've probably seen the potholes and... Yeah, well, it's going to be in two phases, so I'll get to that. Yeah. So the first section is going to be from 8th Street to Baker Drive, and that's the part that has really failed. It's experienced rapid pavement deterioration in the last two to three years, from where it was kind of spider-cracked to now it's in full failure mode. You're seeing large chunks of asphalt come out of it. So we are in the design process to reconstruct that portion of it. And what I mean when I say reconstruct, it'd be to remove all of the asphalt. We've done some potholing, found that there was an inch or two crushed rock underneath it, and the rest of it was just sitting on native soil. So what we're going to do is dig all that out of there and then bring in some new material to give it a better structural resiliency. And then from Baker Drive to Beacon Drive, the other section of it, we're going to be repaving it in some form. Right now, we're trying to decide between doing an overlay and in lane, which would be to grind out two to three inches of the travel lanes and repave those. It's in much better shape than the 8th to Baker is, so an overlay is acceptable there. Along with that, the sewer infrastructure, the collection system master plan showed that we need to upsize the existing sewer line from 9th Street to Dean to kind of accommodate a future plan to divert some flows away from 7th Street. And so at that point, we decided we need to phase this project so that we can get it all done during school summer break. We don't want to be in there when kids and families and people are trying to get to school. So the Phase 1 will be to install the new sewer line, upsize it, as well as repave A Street from Baker to Beacon Drive. So A Street is actually an arterial, so it would be the same as you'd see on like our Redwood Avenue, or Dimmick, or what we're going to do on Allen Creek Road. And the purpose of arterials is to move people and vehicles and anything on wheels quickly and efficiently. And a lot of times, that doesn't involve parking. So you'd notice that on like Beacon with our new plans, there's no parking along Beacon because it's an arterial. Same thing on Redwood Highway, there's no parking on there because it's meant to move people from one place to another. As you split off of the actual arterials onto collectors and local streets, that's when you start getting kind of different uses of the street facility. So A Street, all the way from Dimmick, a Highland over there, all the way to Beacon Drive is an arterial in our master plan. So here's what kind of a typical section is from our master plan. So on an arterial, you'd have a center-turn lane typically. You'd have a couple of travel lanes, one in each direction, a bike facility on both sides, typically six foot wide. And then you would have either a planter strip with a narrower sidewalk, or you'd be curbed tight with a wider sidewalk. So this project, as you guys are familiar, an example would be Allen Creek Road. The pain that has gone into getting Allen Creek Road to where it is today, A Street would be at least that, if not worse, to acquire the necessary right-of-way to widen A Street. So that's really off the table. So the purpose of this project is to fix the street, make it last into the future, but it's not to widen it. We can't bring it to arterial standards without millions and millions of dollars to throw at it and a lot of time. So when I brought this up to the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee, they asked if there was any way that we could put bike facilities on A Street without widening it. They understood that we couldn't widen it, but they said, hey, it's an important street. We need some good east-west connectors in the northern part of town, which we do for bikes. And it's also in front of the school, good access to Lincoln Elementary School as well as the high school. And so it kind of made a lot of sense. So we decided to look at it. And so I heard our city engineer and his design firm draws up three different options as we're trying to figure out how to do this. And sort of like upcoming slides, I'll give you those options and hopefully get your feedback at the end of it. So here's just a look at where we're at geographically. A Street, as I mentioned, is an arterial, and we're specifically talking about this section right here. And then this would be your high school. Okay, so option A would be the best, I guess, from a bicycle perspective, which would be to eliminate parking on both sides of the street. You'd have a two-foot striped buffer, and then you would have bike facilities on either side of that. So this option would result in approximately a loss of 210 parking spaces from 7th Street all the way to Beacon. And this was the preferred option of the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee. So what would this look like? We'd have two travel lanes, 11 foot, as you recall from the arterial standard drawing that I showed you earlier. You'd have two-foot buffers, and then you would have five-foot bike lanes. Curb, gutter, sidewalk would all remain the same, just because that's our plan. We just don't have the money or the time to fix all of that. So that would give you a really good bike facility up and down A Street. And here's kind of what it'd look like drawn out and striped. I know it's a little bit small, but you'd have your bike facilities heading with traffic in either direction here. Option B was a raised cycle path with one-sided parking. This option would eliminate parking on one side of the street. Right now, we're probably looking at the north side. And the extra area would be used to have a nine-foot raised two-way cycle path likely on the north side. This would result in approximately 105 lost parking spaces, so a little bit better. And this would be the only option that actually increases the traffic or the construction costs. As you'll see in the following slide, we actually have to move the curb and gutter line, as well as build in the new cycle, raised cycle facility. So this would add time and money to the construction cost. But with it being phased, we would have the time to put in more resources into it in future budget cycles to get it done, if that was a priority. Also, just a couple of other things to note, it would be over the top of our eight-inch water line, which I guess is from the 40s or the 60s. I forget what Craig said. But that raised pedestrian facility would be over the top of that. So future repairs or replacements may be more expensive. And we haven't taken this one quite far enough down the design process to know how we would get bicycles to turn off of this two-way cycle track. It would be the first one that we'd have in the city. Other areas have figured it out, like Medford in the downtown area. They've figured out how to get people across traffic, but it would take a little more thought, something we could get figured out. All right. So this is what that option would look like. You'd see the parking on the right there, which would be on the south side of the road. The raised pedestrian or the raised cycle track would be on the north side, and it's two-way, and it would be striped. So it'd kind of look like its own little roadway. I don't know whether we'd do it in concrete or asphalt at this point. And then you'll see the existing sidewalk is still there on both sides of the street. So here again, we didn't widen anything. We just cut the pie a little bit differently. And here's what a look of that would be from over the top in front of the football facility there. And it is a little small, but you'll see that we've got a striped facility right here, and that'd be your cycle track. And they are buffered, going back here, buffered from traffic with that curb, which will make them feel a little bit safer. There could be an option of putting up some delineators and things there as well. But that's what would differentiate it from the actual travel lanes. And you'd still have parking facilities on the south side over here and two 11-foot lanes. And then option C is not exactly the do-nothing, but it's pretty close. It's pretty close to do-nothing. So we would leave it the way it is today. There'd be parking on both sides of the street. This is actually Project 127B out of our transportation system plan, and that would be to sign and bike stencil, you know, the little bike markings on the street to make it a bicycle boulevard. So it's basically a share-o, share the road kind of situation. And that is what our transportation system plan calls out. Although, I would note that this is at the bottom of the preferability index as far as bikes go. I think maybe some high school kids, you may feel comfortable having them ride in with traffic, but you know, kids going to Lincoln Elementary, I don't know if you would. It's just not that comfortable. Typically, share-oes and bike boulevards are used on lower-speed roadways. A Street is signed at 25 miles per hour, so it's relatively low. And it does receive relatively low traffic volumes. The most recent I'd found was around 3,500 annual daily trips, which is by no means high. You know, your Redwood avenues in those places receive 20,000 to 25,000 a day. So here's what option C would look like. They did draw it up with the bike in between the vehicle and the parked vehicle, which isn't the case. You wouldn't be passing bikes on this road, but you would be sharing the road. And here's an excerpt from the transportation system plan. You'll see the green dashed line here on A Street is the extensive the bike boulevard conversion project. And this would be the section that would be taken care of. If we did choose to make this a bike boulevard, we would likely sign and install the pavement markings for the rest of A Street, so you had a good continuous bike boulevard east and west. I forgot to note on the previous slide that this is a Tier 3 project in the transportation system plan. So Tier 1, we've got the money to do it in the 20-year planning horizon. Tier 2, revenues maybe come in a little bit higher. We could do a few of these projects. And Tier 3 is like your wish list project. Maybe we receive some grant funds. So all that to say that it's pretty far down the priority list as far as the transportation system plan goes. And here's what those bike stencils look like in the signs. A few other considerations. I'm sure there's a whole bunch more that I haven't thought of. I did talk to District 7 about this a little bit, a few of their representatives, not their board. I haven't taken it that far. But they were amiable to bike lanes and elimination of parking. But they did want us to consider and figure out how to put a loading zone in front of the football field for their school buses. Currently, they go around the corner over there and then have to get across A Street, which the amount of traffic makes it difficult, as well as the visibility with all the parked cars. So they would like to see if we move forward with one of these options, a loading zone for just buses in front of the football field. Also, anecdotally, I don't have anything to back this up, but traffic speeds are generally higher when you remove parking. So if you used option A and removed all the parking, it's going to feel like a safer roadway that is easier to drive fast on. So right now, when you drive A Street, it feels really congested. There's doors opening, there's kids darting across the street, which makes you drive slower as a driver. But if you open it up, I suspect that the average speeds will go up two to five miles an hour. And it'll be an enforcement issue at that point. And also, just as a note, I mean, it is heavily used, especially during school and of course any sporting events. If you've gone to a football game or anything, or even had the misfortune of driving through there during a football game, it's heavily used. So I'm not real sure where those vehicles would go if we eliminated parking. There's just not a lot on District 7's property. Okay, and call to action date is at your discretion, but I would really appreciate some direction on which one of these options you want us to pursue. We will be trying to get this project bid out probably within the next month or two. So none of these options really change the design. It's just, like I said, how we cut the pie out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Wade. I think we have some questions. Go ahead, Rob, and then Rick.
Yeah, Wade, so when you say that that area near the football field, whatever, is heavily used as far as parking, I think that's what you implied. Is it no parking during the day over there during the school day?
It's probably not. Now, there is some historical paint in there that at some point it was striped as a loading zone for school buses. And from talking to school District 7, that just, either they couldn't get the enforcement to keep it that way, or the paint wore off. And anyways, they kind of gave up on it and started loading their school buses around the corner there.
The reason I ask, I guess I rode over there this morning, and I didn't, at the time when I was riding, I didn't think to really look for signage, but there's no cars parked there when I went by this morning. Zero. Zero. And I'm just wondering if that's a no-parking zone. Because, in other words, I'm trying to figure out how much impact you're actually talking about in that area. Today, there would have been no impact from removing the parking because no one was parked there. So I'm wondering if it's a... And then the other question I had was, when you said 210 parking spaces removed, is that from 7th to Beacon for the whole length of it?
Yes, it is.
Total?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which, you know, I think we could do something small in the middle, but ideally, you'd create a long corner. a long corridor to make it more used.
So the final question for now is, when you say District 7 is amenable to bike lane options, but would like to have designated bus loading zone in front of the football field. I mean, if you have a bus loading zone, it basically just completely eliminates the possibility of having a bike lane. You can't have a bike lane end into a bus loading zone, right?
Yeah.
So if you have a bus loading zone, no bike lane at all, is what we're talking about.
Yeah, or at least at certain times of the day. It could be something that we put some ramps, that if there's buses there, you could go up on the sidewalk maybe, but then you get more pedestrian bicycle conflicts. So yeah, I'm not real sure. At times of the day, you're right, it'd be blocked.
It just seems like District 7, when they make that suggestion, is just not thinking rationally, quite frankly, or realistically, I should say. Thank you.
Rick?
Thank you, Wade. So is the right-of-way throughout that entire section there a 60-foot right-of-way? Do you know?
I believe it was 55 in most locations, so if we were to widen it, we'd be looking at quite a bit.
So with a 55-foot right-of-way and existing curbs where they're at, would you have the opportunity to put a multimodal path on one side?
Not without eliminating the sidewalk. I mean, I guess you could go multimodal potentially. There's a lot of grade issues. Some of those houses are set higher on the north side and lower on the south, and so it could be hard to tie things together and make it work.
So other grading issues could be quite substantial, but other than that, if the right-of-way was wide enough, we would not be involved with easements or gaining additional right-of-way? And we would have that opportunity?
I think we'd still be acquiring a right-of-way and easements to fit in a multimodal path.
Would we?
Yeah.
Okay.
...for allowing people to go. So that was not even something, I mean, we just can't do it, is what you're saying.
Anything's possible with enough time and money.
Yeah. Because that seems to be the biggest, biggest draw of all, is that there's no turn lane, so everybody's coming and going at the same time, and there's no way. Anyway, so, you know, I look at the, and I'm surprised there was no parking. It's usually staff members, is what I really think is on the, by the high school, and then during events. So can you do things to where you have it only during certain events, change the parking and the hours? Because that's, like I said, I can see there being a real problem during football and basketball games and that sort of thing. And then I don't even see how you can put a bus lane there, just like, you know, I just don't understand, because that's going to totally shut down A Street if kids are loading on that side. So, and I would suggest strongly bringing it to the board, because I think, you know, you can talk to people, but when you talk to the school board, they might have a totally different take. So...
If consensus is something different than option C, I'll definitely get in front of the board.
Rob, and then Brian.
So with regards to option A, the no parking and bike lanes on both sides, to address Dwayne's point, you know, I had the same, the same thought that some kind of survey of the, of the residents, or the homeowners, would need to be done. And I know that the, both Chair and other members of the Bike Committee also feel really strongly that the first thing to do, if that option was going to be considered, would be to do a survey. They are not in any way, shape, or form trying to push bike lanes without a survey of those residents. And I know, what I noticed about the houses there also, is that most of those houses on A Street are single-car garage, single-car driveways, so it really does really limit the off-street parking for those houses. If you have one guest, you're, you know, you're parking on the street. So it's definitely an issue for those houses. And I know that, like I say, the Bike Committee absolutely would want to do a survey before option A was even really considered.
Brian?
Yeah, thanks, Wade. On option B is, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear that it also does have the sidewalks. Okay, so the sidewalks plus the cycle path, okay. And then just a question about timeline for you, like it sounds like you're wanting direction fairly quickly, and so how does a survey and the school board and all these things play with your timeline?
It depends. There'd be some ways around it. I definitely, we're going to phase it, so definitely we'll do the sewer work this coming summer. And we can meet that, even if we don't know what the street's going to look like when it's done. That wood delay overlaying or repaving from Baker to Beacon, we'd have to push that off another year, but that's okay, that's not the worst section of it. So it would, it would be doable, so we could spend as much time as needed to get this right. But ideally, I would go out and do the sewer work and the repaving from Baker to Beacon within the next couple of months.
Okay, that sounds good. And then is there, in theory, is there an option D that basically just keeps the street the way it is now without the bike boulevard signage?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, that's with the bike boulevard signage. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Other questions, Val?
Yeah, I don't know if this is a question, but a comment, because I personally come down and go to D Street, because D Street is a, has the bike lanes, and it's not that far off. So if you just had, you know, just had to go down to Beacon, and then Beacon also has bicycle lanes. So the only part really that I think, you know, is the issue is that between, well, even in Beacon, if you're just going as far as Beacon, I don't, you're not even going up the hill beyond that. So anyway, you can go down D Street, it's not technically that difficult, other than maybe just making sure one of those side streets for kids going to Lincoln. I don't, anyway.
So that's a good point. I meant to elaborate on this map a little bit more. So the blue lines are for dedicated bike lanes on this map, and this is existing. So you'll see D Street down here, and it's got really good bike facilities on it, so does Beacon up to A Street. Of course, F Street and Seventh Street's got bike lanes, so there is a good east-west connection on D Street that's only a few blocks away. A Street would be nice too, but the next one that we'll need to somehow tackle would be Savage, because that'd be a good one in the north end, but...
I have a question too, because I do know that right now, ODOT is looking at Sixth and Seventh, and they're looking at that. Are they looking at similar, something to do with Sixth and Seventh, to make those, because on this, of course, there are bicycle lanes, but we know that you're taking your life in your hand at this point if you go there. So I don't know if they're going to try to push it onto one of the side streets going up.
It's pretty likely that they will. Evidently, we're getting closer to getting that project kicked off, it's in the final procurement stage, so any month now. But yes, they'll be looking at alternative options to Sixth and Seventh Street, either to make it better and safer on those streets, or to use one of the side alternative roads, which would be likely Fifth Street or Fourth Street.
It still would be nice to have one on our side, the east side of Sixth or Seventh.
Yeah, there's just a lot of problems with where they all end up connecting. You know, you end up getting kind of dead ends and you have to jog over a street or two, but we're going to look on that side too.
Yeah. Tenth Street's not too bad.
Other questions? Joel?
So I know a lot of kids drive their cars now to high school, and it really impacts the neighborhood. How is the park, I guess that's up to the school board and the administration, do they have enough parking places for their students and staff, or what's the status of that?
I don't know if I could speak to that. Sorry.
I think having attended Grants Pass High and living in that neighborhood, A Street's probably the most inconvenient spot to park near the campus unless you're going to a football game, because you'd have to walk, you know, well, around the corner, and so there's other spots that are further north in the neighborhood that would be closer to the entrance points to the campus.
I was just wondering, because where my son lives is right next to Tigerhead High School, and the on-street parking extends about three blocks in any direction, regardless of how convenient or inconvenient it is. And I don't know if Grants Pass High School has the same issues or not.
I do know they wanted to expand their parking, that was part of the swimming pool issue, is they do want more parking in that area, so that's something that is in the future plans.
Yeah, so the swimming pool's directly across from the main entrance to the campus, and they are trying to have everybody routed through that main door, and that's also the main entry point for the gym, so for drop-offs, you know, you see like on, I guess, Ninth Street near Wharton, where the swimming pool is, is a very busy area for people picking up kids after sports practice, but A Street's just a little bit more removed, but it's definitely very busy on football nights. And very dangerous too, I would say. It's very dark, very narrow, there are a lot of kids darting back and forth between cars, and this one map that you had, I think, for option, or the street outline for maybe B, like it, I don't think that there literally is enough room to have bikes squeezing between parked cars. It was one of the drawings, yeah, that one?
Yeah.
Like, I've seen, like, cars tick, what we'd call it, the side-view mirrors on the big trucks, there's just not space for that.
No, and the intent of that one would be that the bike is acting like a car and they're not side-by-side. You're not going six-wide there. They would just be sharing the lane.
Got you, they're kind of like behind or in front, it's just not showing the depth. Yeah. Yeah, there'd be some squished kids in that situation. Joel?
I just had one more question. Given the existing traffic patterns today and the anticipated, I would guess increase in traffic patterns between the different options, A, B, and C, what would the traffic engineers say the differences are in safety? I mean, the bike lanes on Sixth and Seventh Street are crazy. The two-lane raised bike path looked like it might be the safest, but I don't know.
From what perspective? From a bicyclist or from a...
For anybody's life, including bicyclists.
Well, I think of the options that we have there, people are pretty used to option A, we have that in a lot of areas, which would be the bike lane on both sides, buffered. I think that would be a pretty safe option. I'm not so sure about option B, which was the two-way. I think that option C, you know, you can share and use it if you're a spandex and clicky shoes-wearing guy or gal. And then beyond that, use D Street and access the school from there. I think that one's a pretty good option, too.
Any other questions? Nope. All right, discussion then. Does anybody have a preference or thoughts to share? Rick?
I guess for the start of the discussion, I'd be in favor of just leaving it as is. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dwayne.
I'd have to agree with Rick. I've been to so many events there, and there's just no parking around that place. It doesn't matter if it's a ball game, soccer game, whatever, it's, without widening that street, I just don't see an option for me that makes it better. I mean, I'd love to have a bike lane on there, but I think it's a poor street. I've had many times been there, no parking. I think it's going to be a real inconvenience to the houses that live between there and, is that Circle K? Is it Circle K?
It's a Pinnacle 360.
Yeah, Pinnacle, whatever, it's been changed over the years, but I just have a, I don't see that the housing, people that live on that street are really going to love taking their parking away. I really don't need to do a survey, I'm pretty sure that's what it's going to be, but that's just my feelings. Thank you.
Joel?
Well, I was just wondering if we had enough information from the school board and the school and on traffic patterns to make an informed, good decision today. I don't know how many, I know my high school, not very many people rode bikes anymore, but I'm sure at this high school, they probably do a little bit. I know at Tigerhead, they don't. So the school really has the knowledge on that, and I don't have that.
Brian?
Yeah, I'm not sure how many kids ride their bikes to school, but I do know that that whole area is a very family-heavy area with lots of kids of all ages, because there's lots of schools, and you know, that's just kind of a family-heavy area. So my first thought is that if there's any way to include bike facilities on there, I think it would be helpful and useful for that part of town. Doesn't sound like there's a super straightforward way to do that. So I guess at this point, my inclination would probably be to further investigate option B, because that's the option that allows us to keep 50% or more of the existing parking while also allowing for the bike lane, so it's kind of the compromise option. And then if there's no uptake on option B, I would be in favor of option D. I think option C, putting up signage for, turning that into a bike boulevard will make it less safe than it is now. I grew up in that neighborhood, I know how that neighborhood is, and I don't think giving bikes permission to ride in the street on A Street is a good idea.
Rob?
Yeah, I pretty much agree with Brian. I think the share-os or whatever the bike-sharing insignias on the pavement, the bottom line is, I don't think that car drivers know what they mean. So it's basically just taking out-of-town cyclists and putting them in harm's way, or family and putting them in harm's way, because they think that they have full, you know, right-of-way, or, you know, cars have to defer to them, and the cars don't know what it means. So it's just, it's kind of, in Southern Oregon at least, or at least in Grants Pass, I think that those, the share-os are really counterproductive and dangerous for those reasons. As far as the bike lanes on both sides, I think, I think Dwayne hit it exactly right. I don't think we need to do a survey to know that the homeowners on the south side are not going to favor that. We'd be wasting just time doing the survey there. I do like the idea, potentially, of trying to get, I don't, I don't, I'm not as, I don't have as much objection to removing parking on the north side, because it's not residences for the most part, at least in the school area. And it would be nice to have the ability for people to ride bikes on that street, one way or another. I mean, you know, you look at a couple different levels of bike rider, I mean, you know, for better or for worse, you know, I'm pretty brave on a bike, but there's certain, certain places I won't ride. I won't ride up Seventh Street, I won't ride on that bike lane. I mean, I'll ride in the street, but if you have, you know, younger riders and experienced riders, occasional riders, it's not really safe for them to be riding on a road with no bike lane. So I like the two-way, the possibility of the two-way bike lane on the north side, but I would, I think that's what Brian said, and I happen to agree with him on that possibility and also the, or essentially do nothing except repave it, which would be option D.
Valerie, and then Vanessa?
Yeah, being and living in that area and knowing how busy it is, and you're right, in terms of the number of schools and the number of kids, I mean, it's a part of town where it's older, so a lot of families move into that area, there's a lot of families in that area. You know, I have a question, number one. Is that beacon that just has that one block there that doesn't have any bicycle lanes? Because I know it has bicycle lanes, and then there's just the void, and then it continues on. Is that correct? Because I think it's really important that we have, that I think Madrone is so much of a better option for putting bicycle, because it's just not as busy at all. I would go with B, if that's for the reason that I do think we need bicycle lanes, and I think we need family-safe bicycle lanes. I don't think just putting the share-os or just doing what we have now is going to work. I think the only thing that really kind of works is B. If that doesn't happen, then I would suggest that you take a look at Madrone as something in the beacon, because I, you know, I look at St. Anne's and Lincoln are right there. You know, Tenth Street is, and I know that's something you said can't be done, to me would be ideal, but that's not going to happen. I think Madrone would be a way to go. But anyway, so I would, on A Street, I'm only going to go with the so I would, on A Street, I'm only going to go with the suggestion of B. And if that can't happen, then I think you're just going to have to figure another way in that neighborhood. But I do think it's important that we get bicycle lanes there.
Vanessa?
I am also in support of option B. Just with all of the child facilities that are in the area, I think it's so important that we encourage our kids to ride their bikes. I did want to ask for the, those that don't support option C, the bike boulevard, wouldn't that essentially, right now, can't bikes share the road with cars and wouldn't that just provide a layer of protection for them if we did move in that direction?
I think technically that bikes can right now, but I think it would be less safe to encourage more bikes to use A Street as a shero. A Street is a very long street with no stop signs for most of its length on the east side. And I think if we start promoting people biking on that, it's really going to get congested and there's just more potential for issues with collisions and things like that.
Rob?
Yeah, I think that actually, in theory, the sheroes would provide a level of protection. I think they do exactly the opposite. I think especially people from northern part of the state think that that actually gives them a level of protection and they can kind of arrogantly be out there in the middle of traffic and think that cars are going to respect them. And I think that our local drivers don't know what they mean. So I think it provides, we'll say, an artificial or in, a, an un, what's the word I'm looking for? But it's just a level of protection that doesn't exist. And I think that for inexperienced riders, I think it just actually makes it more dangerous. They're more brazen or think that they have right-of-way and they do, but the car drivers don't necessarily even know what those things mean. So that's, that's what I think on it.
All right. It sounds like four of you at least are interested in the option B with the bike, bike lane maybe on the north side of the street and retaining the parking on the south side of the street. Joel had suggested we get some more info from the school. So would you all like to present that option to the school district and see if they have any feedback? Rob?
So on the, you know, I'm thinking on A Street, I'm thinking near the high school area, but we talked about, Wade said that this goes all the way from basically Seventh to Beacon. So there are residences on the north side, correct, as we get out of the school area. Well, I'd want to hear from those people as well, whether they're okay getting rid of their parking because if we went with two-way bike lane on that side, they're getting rid of their parking. Is that not correct? So I think we need to hear from the residences on the north side as well.
Okay, so you all are thinking that this would go, that the bike lane would extend all the way from Eighth Street to Beacon? Is that what you were suggesting, too?
Yes, that's correct. It'd be a full connection. You wouldn't have just one block or two blocks that would have this. It would be the, it would be the, from Beacon to Sixth and Seventh.
Okay. I was thinking at least 10th Street would connect Lincoln and the high school, depending on what the goal is, right? Yeah. But a good chunk of 10th between Eighth and 10th, or a good chunk of A between Eighth and 10th as a couple dentist offices, the Pinnacle, you know, it's, it's not very residential. Okay, so do you want a survey all the way up or what do you want to ask for here?
Justin had his hand up for just a minute.
I did. I just, I just wanted to report to council. The A Street is currently marked no parking from eight to nine and two to three on the section by the school where maybe you didn't see anybody park. And so probably people just shy away from parking there in general as a result of that.
Kind of effectively blocks it throughout the school day for the, for the students and staff, anyway. Okay, are you asking for a survey? I know a couple of you have nodded your heads, but that is a, an expense and a time consideration if you're asking the adjacent homes and businesses what they think. Brian?
I think with regards to the school district and the school board, it's probably nice as a courtesy to loop them into what we're thinking and giving them the rationale for, you know, what the options are and the way we might be going, to give them an opportunity to comment. And I think a survey, I think a survey of residents is good. My only question is should it just be the north side residents or both sides of the street?
What was that, Rob?
Just the ones that we'd be removing on the north side. I would say we survey the north side. The south side people are keeping their parking.
Rick?
If we're doing a survey in the north side, it seems like removal of the parking would have an impact on the people on the south side. So really, the survey, even if it's only for the north side, should include the people on the south side for their input.
Valerie?
Isn't there a certain amount of noticing that you have to do? Nope, okay. Yeah, I think out of courtesy, it would be just giving them an idea of what you're doing and then give an option, I think probably north and south and the high school. I think it would be the nice thing to do.
Brian?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that surveying all the residents in that area on both sides of the street would probably give us the most comprehensive view.
Okay, I guess in terms of survey, just so that everybody's on the same page, if staff were to send out a letter letting them know that this is what we're considering and an opportunity to provide feedback, you know, written feedback, rather than like actual survey yes/no type questions, is that good with everybody? Just let, providing information and giving them an opportunity for, for feedback? Okay.
That's good with me.
Okay. You don't have to come up with 10 questions, Wade. You're off the hook. Okay. Aaron?
I just want to clarify, that's, that's with option B being the preferred choice at this point.
Option B, yeah, adding bike lanes to the north side of the street.
So that's what the survey would sort of state, this is what we're looking at doing type of thing?
I mean, I would, yeah, include, include an image and of what we're looking at and ask them to share any feedback or concerns they might have. And same with the school staff and board. Okay, any further thoughts on that? No? Okay. Did we answer all of your questions for now? Okay. And let's move on to agenda review. So we have a meeting coming up on Wednesday night with several public hearings. The first is an ordinance regarding a mini-mac storage expansion comprehensive plan, map, and zone amendment, an ordinance consideration for a school district seven property line vacation, and ordinance to consider the Yonser RV Park property line vacation, and an ordinance regarding a property line vacation for On Track. Council action items would be to annex the Yonser RV Park by consent. They're requesting it. A resolution that would authorize change orders for safe routes to school on the Lincoln School project, a resolution to consider overriding the veto of the humanitarian services ordinance. And then our consent calendar items are a resolution that would amend the contract for Meadowwood Reservoir Engineering, a resolution to amend the comprehensive fee schedule, a resolution to apply for community-initiated project grant, a resolution to purchase some water treatment plant chemicals, a motion to acknowledge the monthly and financial quarterly reports, and as well as the October through December financial reports, and an appointment for the tourism committee. We did have an executive session later today, I should mention, that has been moved to April 1st. And then April 1st would be our next workshop. So we would have interviews for our Historic Building and Sites Commission and discussing public safety funding, including how we want to move forward with the food and beverage tax, and considering learning a little more, anyway, about establishing a fire district. Questions about any of those? Brian and then Val?
I just had a question about the fire district idea. How did that come to get on the agenda?
You know, it came up at an agenda-setting meeting and I don't remember exactly who, who it was who brought up the idea, but I know that there were a couple of people interested in learning more about that as an opportunity for public safety funding. So I just said, let's stick it on that workshop so that we could talk about all of our food, public safety funding options, decide where we want to go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Valerie?
Yeah, my remark kind of goes along with that because I do know, I have heard from numerous people who are asking to have some sort of a roundtable to discuss what our options are so that they can get some input and talk about some options and completely understand, you know, the issue we're facing. It's, it always amazes me that even, that we've heard about the how, where we are and how strained we are in public safety, but how many people have not heard it and have questions of me, well, what about this and what about that and what about this? And I can't answer all those questions. I just haven't been able to. So these are people who are big community members and leaders and so I would really like to have some sort of a roundtable where we have the police chief there and fire chief or fire people, Aaron, and actually answer those questions because I think it's going to be really important getting their feedback moving forward because that's what I keep hearing is we want to give the feedback. We want a roundtable. We want to ask questions and it hasn't gotten, it hasn't gotten the steam or ever to go forward. And I just, I hate to keep going forward and forward without doing that because I don't think we'll get the support in whatever we decide to do without having that community discussion. So I would like to see some sort of a roundtable. I don't know if it's during that, if we just invited some people in for that particular workshop or if we did something in a different format, but I do think it's important that we do something, inviting the people in who have. And I can tell you, Pat Fahey has been one who has talked to me, Lowell Gibson, we know Terry Hopkins, Brad Converse. I mean, these are people that are on committees and really want to have discussion with us.
Are they asking questions that weren't answered during the last forum where they could watch the, the video of the previous forum that we did?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think, I think they are questions that, or solutions that they think they could bring forward that I don't have an answer to as to whether that's a possibility or that sort of thing. So, I mean, I could send them to a forum, but I think most of them have seen the forum at some point and still had some of those questions.
Aaron?
One other option, too, and we can do whatever forum, I just want more details on that, is please send them my way or JC's way. We may be able to answer a number of their questions and/or provide them with additional information so we can hit their target. So that'd be a good thing. If you do have someone who's asking questions, you don't have the answers, definitely provide them our contact information and we'd be more than happy to have a discussion with them.
And I have, trust me, I have sent them these questions, but I think that, like I said, that, you know, because it has been thrown around in many, many meetings over the last six months of having some sort of a public forum and public discussion and none of which has ever happened. And I think that's kind of where...
We did do one. We did a, sorry to cut you off, but we did do a forum on that.
Maybe I need to go back and look at it again and see if those questions have been answered. But I just, like I said, I've heard that in the last, in the last month, so.
Okay. Yeah, we have a, we have a pretty substantial section on the website having to do with public safety funding and we did do a forum, too, where the chief and, I don't remember if the fire chief and Aaron were sitting up here, right, answering questions. So I guess, I guess the issue now, I mean, are we talking about why the funding is needed or how to fund it? So if we were to do a second forum, I guess we need to shape what problem it is we're trying to, to solve.
Well, I just, I just hesitate to, I mean, we can talk about a fire district, but to me, a fire district is such a huge thing to take on where we're at right now without a whole lot of public support and people going out, to go out to give us the answer to that. So I guess that's what I'm trying to do is build that sort of, build something with a leader so if we go out with something, they're in support of it. Because I think us talking in circles isn't going to get the support that we're going to need to get something to pass.
Okay, well, I know that some counselors had brought up the idea, and again, I don't remember exactly who it was. Maybe somebody wants to help explain where, who they had spoken to because I don't remember, but it came up in an agenda-setting meeting and as an option and that's why it's on that workshop, not to, I, I think the idea is that we were going to cover a couple of different funding options before the council. Is that right, Aaron?
Well, I was just going to say, if, based on past council direction in public meetings and the suggestion of a forum, the next forum, based on where we are in this process, would be if you wanted to do community forums, community forum on the implementation of the food and beverage tax. That's based on direction that's been provided on where council is. We've already, we've done a forum and we, on, on the funding options and why, and we could do another one and catch other people potentially, but really, the way I see it is the next forum would be, let's have a forum on food and beverage, implementation and questions and answers.
I agree. And really, we were going to cover that in our, in our workshop is what's the process for getting a food and beverage tax on the November ballot. If, if you want to continue to move forward with that, you need to develop the exact language of the tax and establish exactly what percentage it's going to be and whether there'd be exemptions or caps or this and that. And, and all that language has to go on the ballot for voters and the deadline is August. So that was our last direction that was given, is that you were interested in doing that. So at that April 1st meeting would be an opportunity to start hammering that out. But at the same time, people mentioned the fire district, which would be a different path. So just want to keep the decisions, you know, early as possible before we start running up against a whole bunch of deadlines. Yeah, I don't know. Are we done with that or does anybody else?
I got a lot to say, but this is probably not a discussion.
Yeah, as long as we're good with just leaving it on the April 1st workshop, if you do have any questions that you want to be addressed, please let staff know as soon as possible so that they can incorporate the answers into the April 1st workshop. And then at that, at that time, once everybody has the option, opportunity to learn where we're at and what decisions need to be made between, you know, now and the next phase, we'll have that discussion on April 1st. Is there anything else regarding the upcoming agenda? Brian?
Yeah, I just have one quick question on what we're talking about now and then I have one other thing. But with regards to the discussion about a fire district, does staff envision whatever that presentation and discussion looks like, would that be largely applicable to another type of district, like say, a law enforcement district or a parks district or some other district? Or are you, are you thinking that the fire district presentation is going to be very fire-specific?
I'm definitely open to suggestions from council. This is newer on the agenda and don't have really good, clear direction on what you want us to hit. So I think it would maybe serve both purposes in a way, but it'd be more focused on fire. So I could put in there, hey, just in general, special service district, here's how you format, timelines, et cetera. format, timelines, et cetera. So that could be generic to a parks district or a fire district. But because the fire district was specific, then we maybe go into, here are the numbers we'd be looking at in order to fund fire with the district. I wouldn't be looking at that from a parks perspective, or any other kind of service, district perspective.
Okay. I mean, that's fine with me, I'm, I'm not the one pushing for this, so I don't know exactly what the, the target is to hit, so I can't help you there, sorry. The other thing was, what do we need to do to get some sort of homeless shelter site discussion back on the workshop agenda? Is that as simple as, as three counselors asking for it to be put on? I think that it is, but I know that we keep kind of like bringing it up, and then we don't talk about it. So if we could actually get it on a workshop, so we can have a legitimate discussion about where all the counselors are at, where the community's at, where we think we may or may not need to go, and what we may or may not need to do, I think we haven't talked about it in a very long time.
Yeah, are there three people interested in talking about a homeless shelter site? Or, Rob, you have something to add?
Well, yeah, the shelter site is, is part of that, could be part of that discussion, but also, do we have, along a similar line, like, what kind of contingency plan do we have, assuming Supreme Court, we get a Supreme Court willing that we, that's favorable, that we feel is favorable to the city? What does that mean? Does that mean we've got to have a shelter? Does that mean we've got to choose different parks, or limited parks, or? But I'd like to know, like, what our plan is, assuming that we had, got a favorable result, and that could, and the shelter would be part of that discussion, for sure, but there's other parts of that discussion also.
Well, you know, I have no problem discussing it. Once again, the problem that I have is I don't see a source of revenue, and without a source of revenue, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't get it. I see, and I realize that right now, Ucan is working something at the north end of town, I know Mint is working on something at the south end of town. So I do know that there are things that are happening out there, and they have the same sort of issues that we would face, is sustainability in terms of moving forward. I personally think that they would probably have more access to sustainability through Salem than we would at this point, and so, you know, that's why, and I agree with you, Rob, because I think we all recognize, no matter what happens with the, the Supreme Court issue, we need shelters in our community. I, I think that's a given, but I just, I'm not sure that we are the one to fund them, and, and without some sort of funding source, I don't see anywhere in our budget right now where we can pull from to put a shelter, to, to get money for the shelter.
Dwayne?
I'd have to agree with Valerie here, there was, I think there was 65 million passed for shelters or something like that in the budget this, this, at the, in Salem this year, so, but those are grants being given out, so those are grants that those, those agencies had to put, you know, apply for, that's not something the city would apply for, they're for turnkey stuff, so, like Valerie said, those are not something we would do, those are the something that, you know, Ucan or Mint or whatever have to apply for and go through the state. And I know there's some other stuff, too, it's just going through the process, there are big lumps of money up there for certain groups, and like every other grant. So I would encourage them, then, if they want to do something, to apply for those grants that, I don't believe them, the governor has signed off on them, but they are, were approved by the House and Senate, so.
Okay, sorry, Val, Vanessa, go ahead.
I'm also in support of having that discussion. We know the service providers often that do receive those grants work closely and receive support from the cities or counties that they operate in, so I think that we do have a role to play.
Okay, sounds like we have some interest in talking about it, not exactly sure how to handle that. I will let you all know, I mean, Ucan is not planning on opening an ongoing shelter, they were doing the winter warming shelter, but they're not looking at doing a daily shelter, and I'm not sure where Mint is at, so maybe that's one of the things we need to do, too, is just catch up with our providers and see, see what their plans are. Okay, anything else? Brian?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second by Rick, all in favor of adjourning today, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See you Wednesday night.